Sure thing, and you're live now.
Thank you.
All right, I'd like to call the work session of Orange County Board Supervisors from May 25th to order. We only have one item on our work session, and that's the Germana Wilderness Area Plan and Land Use Applications. Mr. Voorhees.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Board members. This evening, what we propose, or this afternoon, what we propose is to just do a high-level, quick review of what the Germana Wilderness Area Plan is, how we got here, and what it means for land use cases that will be coming before the board, because now we actually have the first two that we've had under these new procedures. And so with that, Josh Gillespie, our Director of Planning and Development Services, is going to walk you through that. And then a couple of kind of questions at the end we have for the board to give us some thoughts about. Mr. Gillespie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Supervisors, Mr. Voorhees. Just as Ted said, we're going to walk through a couple of these visually. And I would love to hear in the discussion some more guidance and direction. So in the Germana Wilderness Area Plan, we have had two recent land use applications. As you know, both of these are for districts that are only to be mapped in that area of the county. So just real quickly, the area history, I think everyone knows bits and pieces of, is multi-layered and complex. And I think this graphic helps illustrate this. This is the adopted Cultural and Historic Resources Plan. Admitted to memory. Germana Wilderness Plan document. So this one's a good one to start with, because it's, you know, where did we come from? A lot of places, you know, we have prehistoric sites out here through the Revolutionary War, the Gold Rush period, the Civil War, post-war, early 20th century.
Historical.
That's right. So that's what this shows. One of my favorites, there are a lot, you know, Virginia has fantastic history. We also have a lot of fantastic maps and ways to access that history. This is one of the best. We keep this posted on the wall in the Planning and决策 Services Department. This particular map was done by an engineer in 1864, working with the Confederate Army. And you can see in this area what's known as the Germana Plank Road. So we know all plank roads that are out there. You can see the four forts crossing the river. So just looking at those, where the word "Germana" is, and the northwest, and wilderness, and kind of southeast. So that kind of defines what we know of as Germana and wilderness, and those forts across the river. And I have to point out, this is cropped intentionally. When you go to the bottom-left corner of this map, you can just barely see the word "Grove", and that's the historic location of the area known as Locust Grove, which of course, we've kind of allowed to creep into Germana Wilderness generally. But this is Locust Grove slash Germana Wilderness, as it appeared in 1864. So I want to walk through the plan components for the Germana Wilderness Area Plan. It was adopted in 2018 by looking at one of our sub-areas. And so we'll look at SubArea 1. The plan, title page, I think you all recognize, and acknowledgement of the, really, the foundational and very hard work done by members of the Board Supervisors, but also the Steering Committee for the Route 3 area. The plan is very simple. It has the eight sub-areas, one through eight, and I'm not going to walk through each one of those tonight. But I do just want to go through the names. Spotswood, Manahoek, Germana, Wilderness Run, Lake of the Woods, Flat Run, kind of in the southwest, South Wilderness, and Battlefield. And the four wildernesses very good. Sets, you know, the goals and objectives and the high level of what the board's intention was with this plan. These two maps are good at identifying the area and what they're marked. You see outline red, and then as I walk through the one through the eight, basically top, you start at the 12 o'clock position and work your way down, kind of left, right, left, right. It goes one through eight with the last one down to Battlefield. Again, just wanted to share the multi-layers of historic and cultural resources. But also, one really good graphic that's in this plan, and it's oriented up and down, and so in a slide deck, it's hard to blow it up, is your adoption transportation plan. And I'll draw your attention in that to really the central feature, which is that purple avenue that you can see is the main limited-access arterial parkway, or limited-access parkway, which runs parallel to and offset from Route 3. So, you know, the main idea here is to take the through traffic and allow it to continue to be on Route 3, and to move your local traffic to the restricted-access parkway, and let it be basically a feeder road or a frontage road. But also, a lot of activities are going to take place on and off of that parkway that never even get to the main highway. You can go to school, you can go shopping, you can go home, and back and forth. So I just want to walk through one of these sub-areas. They're all equally important in the context, not only of the plan, but in the detail that's for each area. So I'm not starting with Spotswood, because it's the most important area at all. I'm starting with it because it's number one out of eight. So just looking at it, this is the same form that's used for all of the areas. You can see there's an inventory of existing conditions on the writing side. So this is basically two pages side by side, the map of an area, the inset of where it's located, and then the existing conditions within the area. Basically, an inventory by land area of what is there, residential, agricultural types of uses. You know, some other characterization of what the density of residential uses are. Those vary, like the woods is currently more dense than the areas that are partially developed or undeveloped, or, you know, in a state of readiness for development. So natural features are also identified. And so that's sort of the baseline for future planning. So as we turn to the next page on this slide, we'll see future conditions. And the board took a very far-ranging look for the horizon here, which is a 50-year horizon. Often, a comprehensive plan is considered to be updated every five years, but they have about a 20-year horizon. So that is not the intent in the Germana Wilderness Area. The board has intended for this to be the development area, the primary development area for the county, and that that horizon, planning horizon and development horizon is over 50 years. So as we look at things that are occurring in the relatively brief moment in time since 2018, when the board adopted this plan, and where we are in 2021, you'll see that there's still items to do. And so as we look at future conditions, you know, those are identified for residential or housing, for commercial. And then you'll see here, tasks to refine and implement policies. And these are for land use. There are also tasks to refine and implement related to economic development. And then we see the same infrastructure. So just to read through a couple of these. Amend the zoning ordinance to establish a Route 3 corridor district. We do not have that. Amend the zoning ordinance to establish development standards. We do have those. Amend zoning ordinance to create a planned unit development zoning district as the primary zoning district in which emphasizes harmonious and attractive building design and arrangement. Have that. Design, implement, manage, and utility master plan for the Germana Wilderness Area Plan. And that work has been substantially complete. Develop, implement, and manage transportation master plan for the Germana Wilderness Area Plan. Go back to that concept, the plan that we have. We essentially have more than the skeleton and the bones on this, and some of the meat, on a master plan. However, of course, it doesn't call out all the various improvements and timing for those improvements, as a true master plan would call out, fully articulated. And then lastly, develop, implement, and manage historical, cultural assets and opportunities plan. So we have the foundation for that. It would be the map that has all the overlapping circles and go where the things are. You know, but how we fully leverage everything around Germana and the community college, the fort, the trails, and the river, now that still remains as a task to refine and implement policies. So I just wanted to draw those to your attention. I will not go through the economic development policies, because there are a number in those as well. And some, again, cannot be accomplished within even the 50-year horizon. They're just, they're things to be working on. So in the code, we have three districts, planned development business, planned development mixed use, and traditional residential. And each one of these has their own purpose and intent, and they speak to the overall goal of the planned area, which is different than the goals for the agricultural areas in the county. This is intended to be a development area. So just kind of look at what those are for mixed uses. So business is intended for planned, commercial group development, basically, planned, built, mixed use, multiple uses, residential, commercial, industrial, and so on. And then planned residential traditional design. And this district is intended to be located near non-residential uses, so to create walkable communities that are near the town center, for example, but wouldn't necessarily have a town center in that zoning and in that development itself. So we have two pending applications, just to quickly walk through those. RAC 2001 Signature Station and RAC 2102, which is Wilderness Crossing. Signature Station is a rezoning of 75.8 acres from C2 and R4 to PMD, which is planning mixed-use development. We received this application in August 2020. Went to an application review committee where comments were submitted by correspondents with members of the committee. Those comments were presented along with the case and recommendations from staff to the planning commission, and there had been some continuances at the commission level as the proffers had been revised. And planning commission did recommend approval in April 2021. And I will add a little bit to what's missing as we get into the next case. And RAC 2102 Wilderness Crossing, we had a rezoning application received, I'm not sure if it's written here, March 2021, 2,600 acres, mixed zoning classifications existing, agricultural, industrial, commercial, residential, all going to PMD planned mixed-use development. I'm sorry, it was received March 2021. The Application Review Committee, or ARC, in this case, met in person highly sensitive to COVID protocols period of March and April, but not in some of the lockdown or unknown periods of late summer 2020. We received comments, comments were made in the meeting and by correspondents. And this case is pending presentation to the planning commission after public engagement continues. I'll add, in this case, we were inclusive of the planning commissioners and the supervisors who had been active in the steering committee for Germana Wilderness. We've been active in the Route 3 steering committee, preceded the Germana Wilderness Plan of the 2015, 16, 17, and adopted in '18 period. So there was an active participation, really to facilitate discussion with the board group. That's really what I wanted to present you today, to bring you up to our current cases. And in terms of directed questions, Ted, I know we talked about one or two things.
Sure. So, you know, I feel like this helped remind me of kind of the big-picture things that happened. You know, I wasn't here when a lot of this was developed. But you get a sense of how the plan is organized. So for those of you who weren't actively involved in it, now you know that if you want to kind of drill into one of the areas, you can do that. It has these map tools, so you can inventory and look at and learn about. But fundamentally, when we process cases, they're going to come to you, and you're going to have this as your policy document to go to and see if things conform to that. And you're going to have those three zoning categories or districts are what we're looking at as the most powerful legislative zoning tool to use to bring these plans into your vision. So I felt like this was a helpful piece for me. The other thing that I think is important for us to realize is to go back through those identified but incomplete tasks. And so we want to get onto some sort of a cadence of bringing forward those elements that need attention, code changes, or plan amendments, or adoption of other ancillary plans. And we need to get it back into a pattern now of filling out those incomplete tasks. So that is something that we should get a schedule together on, review it with the board, and see what your comfort level is for moving those things forward. And then a couple other things that we've had some conversation about, but maybe we can have some more tonight to help clarify is the ARC process is in code, and it currently does not show members of the board of supervisors or the planning commission in that process. However, we know that there was some conversation about doing that for the Germana Wilderness Area. And we did invite those folks to participate in the Wilderness Crossing case, and so they've done that. We're looking to go back out of sequence to do that for Signature Station, because that's the intent of the, you know, involved people. But we probably need to think about, if we want this to carry forward permanently, we need to think about how we do that, or is it a reconstitution of the steering committee, for example, for that purpose as opposed to the ARC? So, you know, there's some different ways to get at that, to get the involvement you want, because we understand that you want board and planning commission, steering committee, extra attention. So that's a piece that we'd love to hear some more conversation about. And then we also have the utility master plan. A lot of work was done on that, and it got to the point where it was probably adoptable, but it didn't get adopted. And I'm hearing from some board members that we think maybe we're at the point where we should bring that back for board adoption. Kurt and I have had some conversation about, you know, re-engaging the consultants on that, because the two lead consultants from Draper, Draper Aiden and Wiley Wilson, have retired from the firm. So we need to get a new lead consultant from those agencies or from those contractors. And then what we think we would want to do is come back to you with a presentation that kind of, just like we did here, kind of reminds you what's in the plan, and if you adopt it, what does that mean? And then we'll need to develop the appropriate relationship with RSA on how we implement that plan review process for conformance. Does it, do we do it? Do we have a third-party entity, maybe a contracted engineer? Does RSA do it? And that makes the most sense to me. But we'll need to confirm that, you know, what your intent is, and get them on board through some sort of, you know, MOU or whatever, that they'll do reviews in conformance with your adoption plan. So those are a few things that we'd like to have some conversation with you about. Josh, anything else that...
No, sir. I was trying to make sure that we were getting everything, but that's, I think that really does cover the bases.
I'd like to talk a little bit about the application review committee process. You had, let me first sort of toss a question to you, to get your views on. Since you've come to this not only fresh, but with some implementation responsibilities associated with it, what is your sort of view or thoughts about how that application review committee process should work? Let me say a little bit by saying, I think the intent from the steering committee, as this was being put together, was it was going to, that application review committee would be a bridge between the applicant and the early application discussions and documents and plans. And then the final product that would get submitted for the formal approval process. There's a lot of work between those two milestones. And the application review committee was, I think, sort of the vehicle to build that bridge or move that process along. Does it come across to you that way, or some other way, or is there a better way? Because we didn't give a lot of definition to it, but there is, there are documents around that describe it in some detail, the ARC in some detail.
Sure, sure. No, that was a great question. So a case of this complexity, or cases of Wilderness Crossing as one example, is particularly complex, because it's large and has a lot of parts to it. But in any case, this mixed use has complexities to it. Even a residential development that, you know, on its face has one or two uses, but doesn't have a lot of complexity, is always going to have some potential wrinkles, whether it's road access, or availability of water and sewer, the capacity of the facilities that are in the ground, whatever it may be. And it may be that in the period from which there's a pre-application discussion with county and other service providers, the VDOT, RSA, outside agencies, in that pre-application period, hopefully, the right questions are posed. So by the time the application is proposed, 75, 90% of the sort of homework on the technical things has at least been brought up, maybe not resolved, maybe not, but at least addressed, recognized and addressed. However, a lot of pre-application work that went in on Wilderness Crossing, for example, was somewhat stuck on transportation in particular, because there were some outstanding items that could not be resolved during pre-application. So we're in the period now where we are discussing with them what comes forward to the planning commission. So to your question, what's happening there in ARC that gets to the planning commission? Is it refining the application, is it making it different, or making it more in conformance with what our objectives are? Yes, that's the purpose. You know, application review otherwise is a pretty straightforward process. Do you have everything that you need? Do we understand what you're proposing? Yes, 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 that's pretty much it. If that's your application review. But to the substance of what's being proposed, yes, that should be the review committee process. And many localities that they use a technical review committee, or application review committee, or development review committee, or whatever they may title it, may have cases be an application review for six or nine months or more, while they work out major substantive technical issues before it comes to a body. And, you know, I will tell you, my personal goal is to decrease that time as much as possible, because I want to have those conversations on the front end before we have a hot line application, and then we're trying to explain to people, and the cards are shuffling around a little bit. But that's, again, that presumes that we have much pre-application conversation.
Yeah, I think that's compatible with what sort of the vision of the process all along. We recognize that there could be, and in likely most cases will be, a rather significant gap in terms of detailed information, conditions, all of those things, the early stages and the final product that is, that meets the expectations of, not only of the plan, but the communities.
And I would add to the implementation part, because that's really what you're asking. Implementation is really post-approval, right? And that's everything after the case is actually approved, then it's back in the administrative court. And as long as they're in conformance with plan documents and in conformance with zoning documents, then at that point, you know, there are issues to negotiate related to quality, and materials, and other fine points, but that's all administrative. There's, you know, the legislative decisions that made with designing. So we have really good design standards in place, for the most part, which I think do reflect a lot of the work from the various steering committees, from the Route 3 steering committee, to the Germana Wilderness Steering Committee, all the work that was involved in the planning committee. And I did, as Mr. Johnson does, I went through those in great detail to the planning commission on Thursday, to actually, I think, remind some of the commissioners who participated in those conversations what the board actually adopted. Some things are very specified. In the traditional residential district, a good example is, "Street trees shall be designed so that at maturity, there's a full canopy over the street." That's a very specific requirement. And I have to know the difference between, you know, a cedar and an oak tree in which has lateral branches, and what they look like at maturity, and what the year is, and what the canopy is. So, you know, there's evaluation that goes into making sure that what's proposed is consistent with the requirement. Some of the items, I would, while I don't have a good example of it right now, but some of the items are not specific. They're more general goal or aspirational. "We would like to see these sorts of things." It is subjective. We'll work through it as we work through it. So the two implementations, a lot of it that you, looking at zoning cases, are putting in place, by approving that district, you're approving affirmative standards that give them their implementation path.
And I think that sort of emphasizes the importance of the ARC process, is if that process results in a document that will become the zoning, in effect, for that project. It will be the governing document, if you will.
I'll give you an example of something that's aspirational, but not specific, just because I've run into this in some places, where you say there is a desire to have a certain amount of open space in every, you know, housing grouping. So you can be very specific by saying, "There shall be at least one half acre of publicly dedicated open space per 40 homes." That's very, that's specific, and we can measure that. But that might lead you to a place where you're sort of arbitrarily dropping these things in, whereas if you had more design flexibility, you could, you know, put it so it fits with the land better. And maybe it's okay with 20 homes in this area, but it's okay with 60 homes in that area. So you just want to be general in your statement, and then you need to evaluate it on a case-by-case basis. But if they submit plans with no open space, you know, in that whole chunk of homes, you're able to say, "Hey, look, you didn't propose any in here. I mean, we're flexible, but there's none. So what can you do about it? Well, we got a trail that connects across this creek over here, and here it is. Oh, well, that solves the problem." You know, I mean, those are the kinds of give-and-take things you might be able to do with a less specific standard. But you've got to have something to work with. I mean, that's just something.
Would you see that in the zoning category, or in the Germana Wilderness Area Plan, where it is less specified in detail? Where you put it in a zoning, it sort of becomes a yes-no kind of thing, as opposed to having that in the top plan segment would be a better way of doing that?
I can answer that two ways. I mean, one is, I'll go to the second part. I mean, at a comprehensive countywide planning scale, we should be looking at landforms, and we should be looking at land uses. And so some is going to relate to, you know, are we looking at steep topography? Are we looking at wetlands? Are we looking at riparian areas? But also, is this high-density development? Is this medium-density development? Low-density residential? Is it agricultural? So, you know, to Ted's example of one for every 40 homes, well, we can collect 40 homes at a low-density agricultural scale, but what purpose is half an acre of residential, I mean, recreational space in there? It doesn't make sense. So, yes, that's a great way to look at Ted's example. The development standards actually have 10% and 20% open space requirements as a percentage, which is flexible, which relates exactly to the implementation of that plan, which is for flexibility. And again, over 2,600 acres, 10% and 20% open space is a big number. And how that's mapped, and how that's designed.
If it's all wetland, it doesn't make, it isn't particularly helpful.
Yeah, right. The way to refine that is to call no more than 50%, you know, at least 50% must be usable open space or developable open space. There are a lot of ways to kind of refine that. Accessible, another way to describe open space, is it accessible, is it usable?
It seems to me that we're kind of feeling our way along here. Probably, or this process will change over time as we see that we maybe don't need certain things, we do need other things. Because this is a process that is much less set in stone than a standard rezoning.
it seems to me we need to have a longer process, even more, a process with more steps in it. So I can see, for instance, you got the A R C. I can see having two board members, two planning commission members involved in that early process because they presumably are going to raise some political questions. I'm going to call it political questions. Things that might conform with the plan as far as you're concerned, but they realize it's going to be a problem because the neighbors aren't going to like it or whatever. I don't think it makes a lot of sense to have staff work with a developer and they're satisfied with it and then they get to a meeting and the planning commission says, oh, we don't like this. And then the board says, that's wasting everybody's time. So we kind of need some clues along the way so the developer kind of knows what they're dealing with. But then there's another step I think we need, which is, and I've lost track of where we are on some of this stuff, but after it goes through the staff, A R C, then I think it needs to be a work session, the planning commission, so that they're not trying to cram everything in at the last moment. They have time to actually think about it, talk about it before the public hearing and then do the process again for the board. Is that currently the plan or no?
I certainly hope so.
Well, let me keep asking. I mean, that needs to be, that needs to be, from my point of view, that needs to be the plan.
It absolutely does.
Because.
I'll go one step further, Mr. Johnson. There's one thing that bothers me, bothers me immensely.
Just one?
This is a board-initiated, a board product, and it is not something for staff to be taking the lead on. That is why two board members are on the application review committee for the Germana Wilderness Area to make sure that it follows what we as the governing bodies have worked for, worked with the planning commission, the economic development authority, and the citizens to ensure that we keep this vision, the direction that we were working towards. Staff work and input is crucial, but staff is not the driver on this. This is a political driver, plain and simple, has been from day one, and we would not be anywhere near where we're at if it was a staff-driven process. Mr. White is trying to find the documentation, because I know we have it, where it stated what the process was for the Germana Wilderness Area. Also, worrying about the rest of the county, what we're doing as far as different ordinances and codes doesn't make a bit of difference with this. It was decided by the citizens of the county through the board of supervisors that we would adopt our comp plan the way it is and adopt the Germana Wilderness Area Plan as part of it. To me, that is the most important part that we keep first and foremost here. And the developers, especially Wilderness Crossing, have presented a phenomenal amount of information that is directly reflective of the G W A. And that is what we've been looking for all along. And we have run into problems in the past when the vision of the board has not been followed. So, much like yourself, I believe this has to be driven from the board perspective representing the constituency of the county. We went and visited other places and saw good, bad enough. And we have found over the years that without us leading a process like this, it is not going to become what we envisioned from day one.
What I don't want to see is have a final A R C committee meeting. And here we all got ready as opposed to, okay, we're going to discuss this particular topic with these engineers or this process. And we've got board and planning commission members attending those detailed meetings. And so it doesn't come to the A R C and, oops, we're back to ground zero. I mean, that's the kind of thing that needs to work step by step. I think that with regard to wilderness crossing, obviously, there's been a lot of thought in terms of what the Germana Wilderness Plan wanted and it's been included in that. But there'll be some things that need to be worked out in detail when you start getting to that point. I don't want to be ready, we're now going to have our A R C meeting and this is the last meeting of the A R C. I don't want to be there.
Right, right. And the input is critical that we get through this process. And I would like to.
Well, is there some confusion in my picking up on confusion between staff and the board in terms of whether it is actually in writing somewhere that the board is going to be on the A R C?
That's one bit of confusion, yes.
But it does, there is a policy document.
Yep. And I have not had the opportunity to go back through and find it. And I understand that, like everybody else, we've had staff changes.
And we're not taking issue with the interest that it isn't somewhere. It just wasn't ever adopted as like an ordinance requirement. So we just want to confirm, if you want to get it to that level of certainty, we can do some work around that.
I don't think we need an ordinance saying that.
I'd just say that somebody in staff is going to have a meeting on a particular aspect of a particular development.
Well, it needs to be, whether it needs to be an ordinance or it needs to be written in policy, it needs to be somewhere so that.
Right. Well, there was a policy document.
So the staff knows that this box needs to be checked off.
And we're operating under the assumption that that's what the board wants to do is to have members of the board and the planning commission on the A R C. I think what we're inviting conversation on is because this is the first really big one and it's new, is that enough? What else can we do to make this successful? And, you know, so I'm hearing workshops, yes, and that A R C isn't a single meeting, it's an evolution. You know, we're going to, it's an iterative process, let's say. And probably both of those things need to happen for some reason.
It's also very specific. Any parcel over twenty acres is what's covered in these different areas. And we, in all reality, over the next twenty years, we have three, maybe four parcels that are going to be at this level. Because the rest of the immediate land that can be developed, it's not going to be developed for at least that long. And that is why it is so critical that we do it in the right manner and make sure that bureaucracy does not derail us in the vision of the people of this county. That is, to me, one of the first and foremost.
Well, I think, yes, I think the A R C needs to be a process. I mean, to me, I mean, I don't have to think about this real long. I mean, somebody brings in an application, I think the first thing is that Josh looks at it and makes sure that it's somewhere within a hearing distance, being in the ballpark. If it's something that just doesn't fit at all, you know, and then maybe you need to have a, maybe we need to have, you know, the A R C, I think, perhaps should be a two-part process. I'm not talking about how many meetings, but you're sort of the technical process, which is you run it by VDOT, you run it by, you know, whatever the other ones are. I mean, I can't remember what the third department was.
Energy.
Yeah, that's it, energy. And and then advance it from there to sort of the political A R C or the, you know, I think that's a good word for it. How are the politicians going to look at this? Because they're the ones who are representing the people directly and know. I mean, VDOT doesn't care what, I'm not slamming VDOT, they don't care what the people think. They're going to look at it, does this work with our roads and is this, you know?
Their intersections don't necessarily, the long-term vision does not necessarily match what the beginning and interim is to get to that point because there's different demands throughout the years. And VDOT doesn't, they don't look, they look at today and the end.
They look at the end game, right. And you've got to be ready to do that. And here's where the political side can begin to say, yeah, we know that's where you want VDOT, but that's not necessary for the next ten years.
Right, exactly.
Can I explore this notion of the steering committee role a little bit? I know I threw it in there and I am hearing this, you know, the goal is to have as much process as we need to get it right, but also not to drag it out and derail it, right? So that's a careful balance. Is the steering committee a way to address that as opposed to having board members on the A R C? Is it rather, should we reconstitute the steering committee as the political review body? I'm just throwing out constructs here to see what.
I would wonder how that might work if we're saying that, okay, we have, at the staff level, we have addressed this small piece of it. Now we take it to the steering committee as a means of doing that?
Or it's parallel. I mean, yeah, it could be.
I don't know. I mean, I think, again, you all send these things out to the Department of Energy and VDOT and they all come back with their little, their little response.
Which are usually very ministerial types.
Very specific.
Yeah, right.
And, okay, and then I would think the next level would then be to have, I don't know whether you want to call it A R C stage two or steering committee. I'm not sure it matters what we call it. But it would be the board and the planning commission and staff and perhaps some members of the other A R C. I don't know that you, I don't know that VDOT needs to be involved in every meeting, for instance, just to use them as an example. I mean, the important drivers here, and I agree with Jim completely. I mean, this is Jim and Lee's district. They need to be the ones who get their eyes on it the earliest and start making a political calculation. Is this something that their constituents will support? Is this something that is good for their area? That needs to happen. I don't think that has to happen on the first day, but it needs to happen pretty early in the process.
In the case of the wilderness crossing, we're looking at the seventeenth, the gentleman, is a town hall meeting. As one of the areas to begin to get the citizen feedback.
And that's from the developer side.
And that's, yeah. And so that begins to, you know, I mean, Jim and I have our ideas. We've worked this thing for a long time, but trying to make sure that, you know, I think we had very positive reaction with all the G W A stuff that we did. But that was somewhat theoretical. Now that we're getting down to the practical, I think that we need to go through that again. And that's some of the kinds of things, you know, the guy says, well, you don't have a hotel there. I mean, you know.
And that's another portion of it that was already changing, that has changed even more with COVID, is amount of retail commercial office space. The last thing that we want to do is have someone come in and build a hundred thousand square feet of office space to sit on. One of the worst things that we could do. And we have to be flexible and moving forward. That's one of the largest things that we've heard from day one is that this needs to be a responsive area that benefits the whole county. And we have to be fluid with a lot of things. And nothing against any individuals, bureaucrats are not flexible.
We didn't want them to be.
Right, right.
That's why we give them ministerial duties.
This is one of those processes that has to be fluid, that has to be able to move around. And that was one of the reasons to implement things the way that we have and involve the political side of it.
I would like to, before we get to the end of this, the work session, you mentioned the water and sewer master plan. I think that should be formally adopted, yes. RSA, they don't want to be planning for the county. And it's very easy for them to sort of adapt to and say, well, we're going to put it here, we're going to do that, you know. And a water and sewer master plan, I think, is their marching orders. I think that they may be the implementers of much of that, but that the master plan should be a formal document. And so I would, you know, I mean, I look back on the history of some of the A R C inputs from RSA. Let's say, yep, we got enough water. And the next project, yep, we got enough water. But they don't look at the other things that haven't been developed yet that are still in the pipeline and say, well, maybe we don't, if we consider all those, we don't have enough water. And that's the kind of thing that I think a master plan can maybe help drive that.
And it drives it not just for these particular developments, but for the entire.
That's what I'm, yeah.
Absolutely. They have a balance sheet that they're drawing down.
And in fact, as they were doing the master plan, in fact, they came up with that. But RSA's thing, you ask, Lynn, do we have enough water? Yep, we do. Right, so do we have enough water? Yeah. Well, we have used up what we've promised in the past.
And we need to be very diligent.
And that's where I think a master plan can begin to do that and say, well, okay, at this point here, here's where we need to be expanding our water capability. This is what we need to be doing for an impound. Are these things on downstream?
So do we have a timeframe on when that plan can be updated?
Starting on June tenth. With the consultants and Ted, Josh and myself. Just kind of dusting it off and going through it and then we'll be ready to come to the board shortly after that.
Okay, very good, very good. Any other comments or Ted, do you have something else?
Well, just my takeaway is, you know, the interest that we confirm that we will be having workshops before we have meetings with an intent to adopt or recommend in the case of planning commission. So that's a, that clarifies for sure that we'll have a two-step process. I think there was some assumption we would be doing that, but I'm very clear on that. And then the A R C process, I think what I'm hearing there is we do want to confirm if there's a policy document out there. If there isn't, we want to maybe put that in front of the board to have it more formally adopted. Maybe it's a resolution or something as opposed to an ordinance amendment, but some way of signaling the, to confirm that we want the board members and the planning commission members on the review process, which needs to be an evolution.
Let me rephrase that for you. Confirmed to staff.
Confirmed to staff because you already know.
We have this in place. This is something I think that at least four of us can absolutely agree upon is this was something that I know in my mind, there never should have been any question because we adopted a policy and this is how we were moving forward.
Yeah, and I certainly took their word for it when we had a conversation about it. When staff went to look for a document, they couldn't find it. So we'll go back and. Yeah, and I certainly took your word for it when we had a conversation about it. It's when staff went to look for a document, they couldn't, they couldn't find it. So we'll, but we'll go back and.
I was having a conversation earlier today about information and, and the point, you know, the debate, that information is useless unless it's accessible. So we want to make sure that this information is accessible.
Got it. I just wanted to make sort of a summary comment about that. The makeup of the A R C, I think, is an important one to be discussed here. I think that each of the groups, whether it's the board members, planning commission members or staff, particularly those three groups, bring up, bring up certain perspective to that, that iterative planning process that I think is, is, is critical. So I, I, I never really liked the term review committee, but it was something that had been turned apart for a long time and so we just used it. Cause it really is more than a review function. It, it's a function of trying to bring it together and, and create a, a final product that, that seems to meet the perspectives of the board, the planning commission and staff. And I think you need all of that to, and working in it as an iterative process to, to, to bring it home, if you will.
More organic than just reviewing.
Well, that's, yeah, that's the point.
And it's more of a challenge with these kinds of zoning categories as opposed to.
It's critical. It's absolutely critical, I think.
And I think it, it needs to be adaptive to the application because you could have a 21 acre site.
Particularly.
Where they bring in everything you ever thought you wanted, because that's not that big. Uh, and, and they do it and, and you, you convene a meeting, everybody kind of looks at it, board members go, you know what? That, that looks fine. And so your meeting is one meeting.
Sure.
Whereas this thing could go on for some significant time while we sort out things like, well, they show a park. All right, who's going to own the park? Who's going to design the park? When, you know, when's the transfer? Who's going to, you know, operate, blah, blah, blah. Or the public safety facility question. What, what does that look like there? When does it transfer? Who, you know, all that, the school site.
School site.
Yeah.
Water and sewer.
Yeah, so.
See, that's not review. That's.
That's not review. That's.
That's way more than review.
Well, yeah.
So that process might need to be, A R C gives an initial round of comments, then we carve the thing up into sections of further study and have a meeting about utilities, a meeting about roads, a meeting about public facilities, and then that takes on its own life.
Well, and maybe the, the, the right next step is for someone to try to sort of capture that characterization of the A R C or whatever you know, calling it, such that we can all look at it and, and say,
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's what we, I think it's important to do that because it, it needs to be shared with everybody. I mean, this, this, everybody needs to understand.
When you come to G WAP, this is what you're going to get.
That's, this is what you're, how we're going to.
And I think we want to say in there that we want you to be successful because this is about how we make our vision reality. So it's not just, we're trying to throw up, you know, obstacles. We want to help you solve these issues. Yeah. All right. Thank you very much for that feedback. I feel that it's helpful to, to.
Any other comment from board members? All right. We will end the work session and take a five-minute recess before. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yes, sir.
Cool. We're ready to recess. Mr. Taran, are you ready to get started?
Rather than anybody sitting down.
Call when we're ready.
Is he ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, call them, meaning the board of supervisors to order if you would join me in the budget allegiance.
Budget allegiance, equal advantage, under the United States of America, in to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's much nicer than doing it all soon.
Yes, sir.
The bigger flight too.
There's no delay. Everybody's just sitting there.
Exactly. All right. Uh, our next is the adoption of the agenda of, I don't know if anyone else has any additions, additions or changes. I have one, and that is 5A under new business. We are going to go ahead and take the planning commission resolution under advisement and not have any discussion this evening regarding that. Okay, Mr. Warhams?
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Any other changes? Motion to approve?
Favored.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Pass as you may. Special presentations and appearances. Mr. Framing, if you'd like to wander on down, a presentation of the Triad Salto. Investigator Johnny Thomas.
How are you doing today?
I'm good.
Yeah, see, hey, everyone takes some pictures. You gotta, now, you, you can cover that up.
Okay.
Before I read the actual citation, I want to explain a little bit of what he did. We had a case of, uh, an, an elderless, uh, adult protective services referred him to, uh, an elderless, uh, elder financial exploitation case. And he took the case on, started interviewing witnesses, family members and medical professionals. Uh, discovered through this investigation that a subject had been befriended by, had befriended the victim, convinced the victim to change his power of attorney to him. Suspect was writing bills of sale and having the victim sign them, ultimately giving the valuable property to him. Then moved the property to his own residence outside of Orange County. Uh, investigator Thomas coordinated with other units to conduct an aerial surveillance around the suspect's residence and was able to develop enough probable cause to obtain a search warrant for the address in Stafford County. Upon execution of the search warrant, a significant portion of the stolen property was located and recovered. The potential loss that we are aware of would have been in excess of $60,000. Although the investigation was a collective effort involving many deputies, both in Orange County and Stafford County, none of this would have moved forward without persistence of investigator Johnny Thomas going above and beyond the call of duty in this case. We do have a problem in Orange County, in fact, in the state and in fact, in the country with, uh, people, uh, scamming not only the elderly, but all of us. And, uh, today, uh, Deputy Kesner had a, a briefing by the FBI explaining all the different scams and how many of them, uh, are affecting our elderly. Uh, but it's, it's members of our own, uh, deputies, our sheriff's office that are out there, uh, helping and finding these things, getting referred and investigating them and basically protecting our elderly. So let me read this thing here. This is presented to investigator Johnny Thomas. On January 4th, 2021, investigator Thomas was instrumental in recovering more than $60,000 in property belonging to a senior citizen who had been financially exploited by a suspect who had befriended him to take advantage of the senior's incapacity. Investigator Thomas served search warrants, worked with other agencies and medical professionals to bring justice to this case. Investigator Lieutenant Becky Jones stated, none of this would have moved forward without the persistence of investigator Thomas going above and beyond this case. Uh, signed the sheriff and the, uh, and the chairman of the board of supervisors. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is one of the kinds of things that, uh, you guys, look at, look at her picture there. It's, most of us get our, our, we, we make contact with the, the sheriff's office and his deputies uh, when we're pulled over alongside and that little right is coming behind our car. Uh, and, but, so we don't always see the positive side. But the, uh, Sheriff Amos and his, and his team really do a lot to try to protect our citizens, not only elderly, but all of us. Again, thank you and thank you, Mark.
Next, if Connie Clark could come up front, please.
Presentation of appreciation. Let me read, up front, you can't hide in the back like you always do. I have to put my glasses on because they didn't make the print large enough. Thing would have been this big. All right. Certificate of appreciation from the county of Orange presents a certificate to Connie Clark and wishes to express its sincere thanks and gratitude for her 20 years of dedicated service. Her wisdom and commitment have inspired many and will be.
Her wisdom and commitment have inspired many and will be remembered for years to come. We wish her good health, happiness, and success in her retirement. And that is signed by both county administrator, Mr. Voorhees, as well as myself.
You can.
Here's this, so we have to turn and look at the camera. You actually, you say, okay, after 20 years, more people than just work in her office are going to find out what Connie Clark looks like. And there's a small gap. Now, you have to stay here for a second. Anyone that has done any financial work with the county over the years, Connie's been instrumental in taking care of a lot of that work. Connie did not want to have a retirement reception. She probably didn't even want to come up here and accept this, so that's why I'm keeping up here as long as I possibly can. Connie has worked very diligently and very quietly over the years. But every time I've ever walked into your office, you've been welcoming, you've done a superb job, and always helped whoever has come in there with what they've needed. Connie, thank you and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
You, too. Thank you.
Now, the next one I'm not going to hug. It's the Virginia Department of Transportation quarterly report. Mr. Allen Saunders, welcome, sir.
Hi, gentlemen. How good evening.
Glad to see you still exist.
It sure is. Yeah, it's great to see everybody. I am here this evening to go over just a brief review of your latest monthly report and answer any questions that you may have. So I want to start out real quick with smart scale. Commonwealth Transportation Board is going to evaluate the recommended smart scale scenario in June. So thankfully, Orange County has got one of the three applications that we submitted on their list. The 231 High Street Roundabout was scored 15th out of 19 that are in the recommended scenario. One of the things that's also important to me is to see how well the 2522 Roundabout Intersection Safety Improvement Score, that was 21 out of the 36 applications, so it was really close to being in the recommended scenario. So I'm hopeful that we're going to begin planning at the end of this year for round five, and that is one project that was so close up, the county will consider that as we get into the next round of smart scale. Our projects, Route 602, we're going to continue marching westward on Route 602, start on the last segment, and if the weather continues to be this dry, hopefully we'll be able to overlay all of 602, all the way to 622 at the end of the year, and mark that one off the list and move up to the west side of 522. Our research and schedule, one thing that I do want to note about that, our research map online has been updated. Please encourage your constituents to go out to BDOT's website, look at the map, identify the routes that are on the map. If they have any questions about that or the solution that we're proposing, please follow up with those stuff. Track engineering studies. One of the things I did want to note that on, you're welcome to ask any questions that you may have about any of the studies that are under review. For 617, Everon Road, one of the things the track engineers recommended was centerline pavement markings, and I know that's something that we've been requesting and reviewing with them for some time. So that's going to be a big improvement along that section. And on to the next page of your county report. The Route 20 intersection improvements, we're going to continue to look at 601 and 611. Everything east of 522, we evaluated the opticons, we found two intersections that don't have them, and shared some information about some of the things that we can do there. But we're going to continue to look at those two intersections, even though they weren't necessarily considered smart scale candidate projects, we're going to continue to look at safety along those two intersections. Area land use, our area land use staff so far, the 33 permits in 2021, just for this section, it doesn't really show all the work that they do with contacting constituents, going out and inspecting entrance, commercial entrance, private entrance. So our land use staff has been really busy, and it's something, it's been a banner year, which is a good thing, but they are hopping. So always take the opportunity to thank them and highlight everything that they do. Our area headquarters across Gordon'sville and Roseville, 999 workhorses this fiscal year. So they, too, have been incredibly busy. And Brett Sutherland, Rhodes School, and Andy Morgan, and Gordon'sville, those, those guys and their crews, they just do a really good job. So those were some of the highlights from your monthly report. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer. Angela.
Actually, comment, question combined. As you're well aware, we've had an abnormally high number of fatal accidents, especially on Route 522.
Right.
I know you're constantly working on making wider shoulders, doing whatever safety improvements you can. I've had a number of constituents that have got to do something, they've got to do something. I know one of the accidents had absolutely nothing to do with the existing conditions. It was not going to be prevented. Is there something more that you all are looking at than normal to try to alleviate some of this? I understand it's mostly due to drivers not paying attention or other things along those lines. But are there any safety things that can be added on that?
Well, we had, we've seen four fatalities along 522 in Orange County just this year. It's always a concern for us because some of the countermeasures that we like to target wouldn't have been effective in these situations. And so we're trying to think outside of the box. One of the things that we are looking at, south of 20, we're looking at the speed limits, the signage, all of the intersection geometry, site distance, south of 20 for an eight-mile section. We met with the track engineers Wednesday. They're going to evaluate the speed limits, look at the pavement markings, the passing zones, all of the signage. 650 is one example. A lot of the countermeasures that we would typically deploy, warning signs, flashing beacons, centerline rumble strips, we have all of those things there. So we're really taking another step to try to determine what else can we do? And when you see, you see speeds like that, first thing that, that I think of is, can we put a speed lock out in the middle of 522 and get everybody to stop and go to that, generate a lot of noise? That's not an effective solution. But sometimes we're just sitting here wondering, what do we do next to try to control some of these circumstances? Whether it's distracted drivers, we continue to see drivers in the safest vehicles that we've ever driven not wearing restraints. Texting, crossing over the centerline, being impaired, and as we, we don't want to ignore those by just thinking they're an enforcement issue. They're a pattern that we continue to see and we keep trying to think, okay, how can we take this another step and find solutions for them? So we are evaluating the 522 quarter with our traffic engineers, we just met with them quite soon, and just trying to think that same way. How do we begin to target some of these things that we don't typically have countermeasures for to find solutions? And we're going to keep doing that.
Very good.
Not just on 522.
I did get a phone call today of Lafayette Drive and Route 20. If the bushes on the east end could be trimmed back and you come to the stop sign on Lafayette, and you're looking to the west. It creates a blind spot.
Sure. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, Alan.
Alan, you on the Greenwood bridge replacement, it says, I noticed that on a couple of them, you say completion summer of 2021. That one, it says expected completion, which makes me wonder if, if there's, you know, that's a little different category. Is there, is there something, is there a holdup there? Is there a problem there or?
No, sorry, not that I'm aware of. Projects on schedule.
Is there something that could happen that could hold things off?
Not that I'm aware of, unless something strategic we're going with the railroad, that project's on schedule for being finished early fall, late summer, early fall. Okay. September right now, so it's on schedule. And it's good because that's the holdup for us to access the southern side as the funding becomes available in 2025 to hard surface that road again, once we can get our postage structure, once it's fixed. Right now, it's on schedule.
Any other questions for us?
617, 617, Everon, centerline markings. What is your thoughts on, what's going, what's that going to do to improve that route?
The centerline markings have a couple of benefits. It improves visibility at night. It helps guide motorists around the curve. It provides some reflectivity at night, and that's one of the things, especially in the rain, when it's really dark, that's a dark section of road. It also has a constricting effect. It keeps traffic in their lane, slows them down, and try to just gravitate over and stay in between the lines and the edge of the shoulder. Instead of getting out into the middle of the road and advancing at a high rate of speed, we see those two benefits of it. At night, driving in the rain, and then because of the improved visibility, but also has a constricting effect that channels motorists and keep them aside. There's criterion for using those centerline markings, and it's a number of vehicles per day, it's a certain lane width, because we don't want to put them in places where they're going to cause a hazard or push somebody over to the shoulder into a mail box.
So you feel 617-1 has reached that threshold?
It has. To the degree that the traffic.
It's basically just for traffic, yeah.
It has. And we've been working with the traffic engineers, trying to find solutions. They've done speed studies along that segment, the southern segment of the road as it ties into 20. And the speeds that they've seen along that would indicate that the motorists can drive at a higher rate of speed than the speed limit safely. So they don't have really any mechanism to lower the speed limit based on the rules and practices that they follow when they're evaluating that. But the pavement markings and the signage is one of the things that if you can't lower the speed limit even further than the 45 that's there, what we can do is look at some of the other tools, like warning signs and pavement markings to help guide motorists and control speeds. We don't get a lot of those in some of the rural areas. The centerline, I would like to put some of the centerline markings in a lot of places that are really dark at night, that we see where people run off the road. But it has to, we don't want to do something that's going to make it unsafe in a way.
Well, one place on that road is kind of, it always bothered me a little bit, it's right up from Transco. It's a pretty short little curve there. And outside of that curve, you know, I think the road can handle the, the speed limit, but there again, at night, when you come, there's a little oncoming traffic, really approaches you pretty quick because of that curve, if you're maybe the exact area I'm talking about. It's only like a quarter mile up from Transco. And then the guardrails are kind of bottlenecking you a little bit, having to meet a track or something like that gets a little hairy, I'm sure. So, yeah. Maybe that's always been a bit of a choke point.
Well, if there's anything that you see out there that you can think of that you may feel that would help improve safety a little bit further, the signage, if you drive through there on a consistent basis, and we don't, especially at night, and if there isn't something that looks fine during the day, during, at night is a problem, just share that, send us a check out. Will do.
Anything else? One more, real quick.
Yes, sir.
Want to thank your crews for getting out and putting gravel on all the shoulders on 611, and 604, and 621 due to the degradation of the traffic from the solar project in Spotsylvania County. So, thank you very much. Did I mention that that's from the degradation from the traffic from Spotsylvania County's solar project? Thank you, Alan.
Yes, sir. Gentlemen.
It might be that traffic on the Spotsylvania County.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. No other big business. Old Business is a memorandum of agreement with Madison.
Consent agenda.
How about the consent agenda? My apologies. Motion maker with the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
See, it was all taken care of, you know, what can I say? Got to be going about Spotsylvania County and their solar system. All right. Old Business is a memorandum between Madison and Orange regarding green withdrawal. Mr. Voorhees.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, we already passed a resolution similar to this one. This is to jointly with Madison, signal our intent to allow Green County to withdraw from the RSA, the Rapid and Service Authority, as a participating jurisdiction. However, that was conditioned upon some, some representation issues, meaning Orange would have three out of the five members on the newly constituted RSA board, and then I believe Madison had a condition around it lasting for at least five years. So there were some back and forth negotiations and several iterations occurred. We now have this one. It's not perfect, but I think the position is it meets the minimum test of representation in five years, and we let the lawyers.
Mess with the rest of it.
Mess with the rest of it. This substantially gets us where I think we want to be, and so we're bringing it back for one more looksee for board adoption. And the same is going on on the Madison side, and hopefully we'll get this thing put behind us and move forward.
Thank you, sir.
Motion to approve it. Sir, a second. Very good. All in favor? Sign away. Very good. Glad to have that one done. All right. Next is, thank you, Mr. Voorhees. Next is Department Director and Constitutional Officer reports, the landfill air permit.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. In December, Draper Aiden Associates notified staff while we were working on cell two construction that DEQ had changed their policy on Title V air permit determinations. The previous policy used the constructed cell capacity to determine the qualified for an air permit. The new policy now uses design capacity. So that takes into account the closed permit, 90 landfill, and all proposed cells for permit 566. So in response to that, Draper Aiden developed a course of action to navigate the permitting process that started with submitting a design capacity report as we had previously done to get an official determination, because we hadn't, hadn't received any official notification from DEQ on this change. Then presuming they would deny that exemption, Draper would submit a updated design capacity report for the new policy, which is all of the design capacity of landfill. Along with that, Draper Aiden would conduct a tier one testing for non-methane organic emissions. And presuming that that would be basically that, I'll explain that tier one testing is using canned numbers, basically worst case scenario numbers. So in other words, the test is designed to worst case scenario generation, so most landfills will fail it. That would trigger an option of either submitting a gas collection system or moving to a tier one. Tier one testing uses numbers that are actual to your landfill. Draper Aiden assumes that, is assuming that based on our numbers and the numbers of landfills around this area that we will be under the limit, therefore be exempt from doing a gas collection system. Once we met, or once we received this information, Draper Aiden, staff met with Solid Waste Committee and reviewed this information with them. At that time, it was determined to move forward with tier one testing, and that, and then results of that test, we'd come back to the board and update the full board on the status of the air permit. With that, staff is recommending to move forward with the tier two testing, using available funds from the landfill cell two project. The total, there's a, and I did notice that there was a typo in my memo, I said that it was $187,000. The actual cost is approximately $110,000. Now, we, over the course of the next year or so, we have six months to do the tier two testing, and then based on the results of that, we have 12 months to fill out the application for the Title V air permit.
Questions? Is there anything that those that you need from us other than?
Yes, sir. Just to, excuse me, there's also a task order for Draper Aiden to conduct the tier two testing for $25,000 dollars, just to move forward with that task order as well.
entertain a motion for both of those?
I had a question. Go ahead and. The funding you say is available from the, from the project, do you have a contingency built in there that says that this is, this is not something that's going to trigger funding issues a year from now or two years from now?
No, we have, we have plenty of available funds in that project. We have, we roughly.
You're telling me we have a budget that's happened?
We did. We, thankfully, we have a budget.
Okay.
I think we let that one get through.
No, we have a record. You heard him say it.
We need to cut more out of that budget.
That budget committee needs to do a lot better job.
Sir.
There you go.
Move to approve.
Thank you, sir.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you, Aaron. Next is county attorney's report, proposed ordinance to increase the fines for littering. Mr. Lech.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last meeting, I remember meeting before anyway, there was some question about all the litter that were appearing on our highways. And the fact that we actually didn't have an ordinance, we have a solid waste disposal ordinance that deals with people disposing trash on the property, but we did not have a littering ordinance. So what I drafted for you, it's in your agenda, is a proposed littering ordinance that's lifted pretty much verbatim from state code. The highlights of it, I put a thousand dollar minimum fine. It actually, state code says you can do anything from two hundred and fifty dollars on, so you can reduce that thousand if you wanted to. You'll notice that the way it works is technically a citizen could go and swear out a warrant for somebody littering. Citizen saw a car throwing trash out the window, got the license plate number. There's a presumption in the ordinance that the owner of that vehicle is the one that threw the trash out and they got to prove they didn't. It's also a misdemeanor. It does have section D, which I don't have to add, which allows the court to force, instead of giving them jail time or a fine, they can give them community service and make them pick up trash along the road, which seems sort of poetic justice. So I put that in there, we aren't required to have that. And so with that, I'll answer any questions anybody has.
We don't have any questions. Well, Tom, in your research, did you come across any discussions or comments about enforcement? Is this an effective tool from what people that have used this since? Did you see anything that gave it indication?
Here's a demo. Although the citizens can make complaints, very few citizens ever do because they don't want to quote unquote get involved. It's, you know, they want to make anonymous complaints, but we can't go to court on an anonymous complaint. You can on a building code violation or a zoning violation theoretically because you can verify it yourself. But so the reality is it's much more effective if the citizens are watching because how often does the sheriff's office see somebody actually discarding trash? So that's sort of where the breakdown happens is that in most jurisdictions, sheriff's office has this tool. But they're certainly not going to be the witnesses to the bulk of the trash that was flying out of people's windows.
But this does give the sheriff an additional.
It does give the sheriff an additional. And one thing I might suggest, you could as a policy say all or ninety percent or whatever of all revenues generated off the ordinance could to the sheriff's department's budget. And that might motivate them to, to be more aware of trash being ejected from vehicles. I didn't add that because I wouldn't make that part of the ordinance. I would just make that a midterm policy. But, but that is the biggest problem is even though this could be operated off the citizen complaint system, that citizen would have to testify in this day and age people like to do that.
I know, I was driving through another county a few days ago and saw a good sized sign saying that they're twenty-five hundred dollar fine for.
Well, that's one thing we could do, we could put up signs and maybe the first two or three people we add, see if the papers will run some front page.
But even just the fact that we've adopted an ordinance and people see that might be helpful.
It may diminish it some, some people are going to be risk of a person. I mean, I noticed everybody still talks on their shelf on their text while they're driving, but.
Any discussion regarding those comments?
We should put it up, put the process in place here publicly. Which is what I think you're recommending, right?
Yeah, yeah, just add to an agenda for public hearing. See what you get.
So we'll have to add it to the agenda.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Lech. See if we can turn to the speaker.
See, yeah, exactly.
All right, next is the county administrator report, a resolution to establish the authority of the Orange County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is in some ways a bit of belt suspenders, but not entirely in that the position of county administrator does have his set out in code, but the statutes are a little bit vague in that they essentially reserve all authority to the board of supervisors for administration of government in localities and counties unless it's delegated. So sometimes there are from time to time cases where the question is asked, do you have the authority to sign this? Do you have the authority to delegate such and such? This resolution sets out to make it clear what authorities you intend to delegate to the position of county administrator. Couple of examples are things that can happen or currently happen. Annually, you appoint the county administrators clerk to the board of supervisors. Adopting this resolution, you would no longer have to do that annually. If you chose to appoint someone else, you could certainly just revoke that appointment and appoint someone else. But that's an example. And then there are just other various administrative delegations. And one of the things that, or maybe principally drove this was the issue of dealing with personnel policies. You expect me to administer the personnel policies of the jurisdiction, but there are a number of them that need to be revised. And rather than sort of bring all these day-to-day ministerial things to the board, there are a number of things that I would handle through this delegation. And so I put this before you for consideration.
Would you like to make a motion? I have a question about personnel policies. Sometimes the policies get into broader areas that would seem to be reserved for the board. You know, in terms of a policy with less regard vacation time or policies with regard to. I'm just thinking of something that we've approved in the past seemed to me to be kinds of things that we want to maintain control of. And I'm not sure how to differentiate between the administrative things and a significant policy.
Yeah, I tend to agree with Lee. I'm not comfortable with the turning over the personnel policy.
May I make a suggestion?
To the county administrator. I think that the board, I can remember the first personnel policy. And the board sat here and went through it line by line. And I'm not interested in doing that. I don't think that's good use of our time. But there are some aspects of personnel policy that I think do go to issues that the board really should make the call on. And so, again, I have no problem with having the county administrators sort of keep the personnel policy updated and so bring changes to the board from time to time to, to accomplish that. And certainly to make suggestions and so forth and so on. But I am uncomfortable with the idea of turning over the whole.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking a lot of the administrative things could be brought to us in a consent agenda item. If it's not a, you know, the public law has required this and this incorporates something in terms of statute. And that wouldn't necessarily mean the boards gets involved in discussing it or debating it. But it would, so that might be the means of differentiating between broader policies and specific administration things.
I think anything that a constituent might come to a board member and say, why is Orange County doing this? You know, because the county administrator said so is not a good answer.
I heard you make a comment.
Yeah, well, I was.
No, I heard him suggest maybe he could make a comment. He never actually made it.
I think where the distinction is going to be is fiscal and significant operational modifications. Anything that affects us fiscally, obviously you wouldn't know about it. And if it's a significant operational change, so maybe you say, with the exception of those policy changes that have a fiscal impact on the county or a significant impact on operations of the county.
Well, even significant impact on the individual staff members. May not be a significant impact on operations, but significant impact on the individual staff.
I made a suggestion. Our new HR director is in the process of updating the policies and procedures. Is that correct?
Well, so we have created a, you know, kind of a bundling of policies that we think are more maybe the kind that you're referring to, that we think maybe the board would have interest in. And then others that are really ministerial. And we try to take a crack at that.
Could we possibly get the ministerial ones done first and bring them to us?
I'm not sure the idea of a policy change that's ministerial, that's not significant, just showing up as a, as a consent agenda item.
Well, what I was going to suggest is that we get two portions of the personnel policy manual done. Let us have a review of it and see if it's acceptable to go ahead. Just a suggestion. I don't know what other thoughts are. Or if the thoughts are currently, let's just let it sit and we'll move forward to a later date and time.
And I'll give you a couple of other examples of something just to think about while you, while you come up with this. In the personnel manual as we have it, there are some things that aren't personnel policies. So there's a credit card use policy and because there's no other places to put it. So my intention is to create some, you know, a place for financial policies, not board financial policies, but financial operational policies to reside. That may be a place for credit card use. There are IT policies, you know, you gotta use your, change your password so and so and this and that. Those are policies that we need to house. There are some facility policies that we need to house. And as I've mentioned before, all the employee evaluation forms are adopted by the board, which seems excessive to me. So trying to figure out how we, you know, how we right-size that and where we put stuff. That's my intent. And I certainly understand that there are policies that the board needs to reserve to themselves.
Well, Ted, you know, I'm going to be trade, but you're the county administrator. So you're my district. You know, I don't want, I don't want the board sitting here deciding whether or not Fred can have next Thursday off. That's, you're the county administrator, you're going to decide that. But I think the board should decide whether or not, you know, whether you get two weeks after so many years or four weeks after so many years or whatever. And I'm just using those as examples. So I don't see, I'm absolutely on board with it being updated. And I don't want to go line by line through it. So I'm fine with having you in charge of, you know, overseeing the personnel policy upgrade. And when things have been stuck in there that really should be somewhere else, you know, let's create an itch for it. No problem with that. But I also don't see a problem with you get that all set up the way you want it. Presenting it to the board and saying, here are the major changes we've made. You know, here are the new policies we've done and having the board sign off on that. And then essentially nothing happens. You will administrate if somebody's not doing their job or if there's some conflict between employees or if there's inappropriate behavior, you're going to be the one who's dealing with that. That's not something that's brought to the board. So.
This is good feedback. Appreciate it.
Okay.
I mean, if we drop that particular item in the, in this resolution, I would be okay with the rest of it. I'm five, actually just have a couple of questions. I started reading it, I thought it, where it was going was to designate you as the quote purchasing agent, which you are. And I'm not sure that the language in those two paragraphs, especially the first one, actually lines up with the procurement policy as precisely as it needs to. You do have certain authorities, but certain things have to be competitively procured and other kind of things. And so you might want to just check that language a little bit. I think, I think the general direction of where it's going is correct. But I think it's, I think it probably, according to our procurement policy, specifically should designate you as the, as the purchasing agent. And that means something because it has to do with protecting information and people being able to ask you questions that they can't ask anybody else questions. So I think that designation should be included. And then it has to mirror whatever the procurement policy says. You certainly have signature authority to purchase things up to a certain dollar threshold without competition. But at other thresholds, you have to cause competition. And so it just, it needs a little bit, I think, of refinement to, to get that authority the way it needs to be to have you be that purchasing agent. Tom, you may have to look at that a little bit. I just went through this because of another reason. And there's a lot of stuff in there that's.
Well, procurement law, we have to follow it. So we don't need to say we have to follow it. We have to follow state procurement law. Where does two hundred thousand, where this language comes from? State law allows us to do up to two hundred without following the full-blown procurement procedure. For example, we can get free phone quotes or, so what if we have an internal policy under two hundred thousand that doesn't follow the full-blown state.
And we do, and we do.
And we do. I think right now it's at a hundred because that used to be the previous cap in the state. And so really all this is saying is those purchases under two, he doesn't need to come here to get them approved. We can say it, but it doesn't have to be said, he has to follow procurement. We still have to follow procurement no matter what we do. So he'll still have to get the free phone quotes or follow our internal procurement policy. And maybe that's what we move back to y'all's, an amendment, is that what you're asking for? Amendment to procurement policy to sort of marry this.
Well, yeah, they need to be saying the same thing essentially. That's really what I'm after. And it's, it's a little unclear whether, at what level he can actually execute a contract without board approval. That's, that's a little different than signing a task order under an existing contract with a different budget threshold. I'm just a little bit, I had an attempt to go back and check. So the language needs to be compatible with whatever the, both state code and our existing procurement policy says.
The parent five says that they're going to make purchases extra contract subject to the county's adopted procurement policy.
And maybe that's all that needs to happen. And that's all I'm really pointing to.
What Ted was saying is if he signs a fifty thousand dollar contract tomorrow, technically he hasn't been given authority to do that without coming to board. So that's what we're trying to alleviate here is technically every contract, small contract, he signs, a lender signs as his design name. Technically, we could challenge as not even being validly executed.
And that's why I think we should go first, that does it make him as the procurement agent? That has a meaning. And if you read our policy, it is defined to have certain responsibilities and authorities.
We'd be happy to circle back on, on that piece and then the personnel piece. See if there's a way to say that differently that captures what I'm hearing.
And I think it might mirror the procurement piece a little bit. Certainly, if you're operating within the existing adopted policy, personnel policy in this case, I think we certainly want to pass that too. There might be a threshold somewhere that can be described in this, in the procurement case, it's too. a threshold somewhere that can be described in this, in the procurement case, it's two hundred thousand dollars that 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 and maybe it's just a simple list, you know, business hours, work hours, work week, payroll. You know, there's a, there's a finite list of things that probably are gonna, that the board needs to be involved with. But otherwise, an adoption policy is yours to, you know, move forward with, it seems to me.
Put this on shelf where you look at it and bring it back to us.
Happy to do that.
Any other comments?
All right. Thank you very much.
Good. Next, let's start down with Mr. Marshall's board comment.
No comment.
Mr. White?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
I don't have anything at the moment.
I'll come back to you then, sir. Mr. Frank?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Johnson?
He's got a big brain there.
I have no comment.
So you're it?
Wonderful.
You're good, Mr. Johnson. Very good. All right, next is informational items. After that is appointments to boards, commissions and committees. Anyone have anything? One, two, twice. Gone.
Well, I think you should add another Social Services Advisory Board vacancy.
Who's that?
District five, Carter resigned.
And you have Mr. Hutchinson vacancy, correct, Mr. Carter?
Yeah.
And Allison, uh we need Bruce to resign from the Arizona leadership. She's moved out of here.
Okay.
She needs to be removed from that.
Nothing further there. Next, please.
I'll forward to her here.
Thank you.
This is the calendar. We don't have anything yet to add to that. Allison?
Um, Mr. Chairman, we do have two matters that have planning commission recommendation that we're awaiting scheduling for board supervisors' public hearings. One of them being a GWAP related application, Signature Station that was discussed earlier. And then the Red Fish Solar application did receive a a recommendation at last Thursday's planning commission meeting.
Okay.
I was kind of holding off pending on or depending how discussions went this evening.
Okay. I believe after talking with gentlemen from Signature Station, they're now aware that they need to go through at least one meeting further. I don't know if that might be able to be accomplished. Would the board like to schedule a public hearing or?
Schedule a workshop?
Yeah, we could schedule a workshop.
And that's fine. Just so. Let's go ahead and do that, Allison.
Um, how soon do you want to do that? We have some matters penciled in for your June eighth. Um, but we can be as flexible as you need us to be or?
What's the second?
Um, second meeting in June is the twenty second.
What do we have there? Anything so far that?
There, there's a number of work session items kind of floating around, but I think you know, we can, we can make this work.
Which would fit better, first or the second meeting? I I really don't care.
Well,
the second.
I don't have a, I one of the things I think we should do is not drag these things out.
Right.
And so I I don't have a problem with, I mean, we could, we could schedule a you know, a two hour work session. If we've already got a one work session, we could schedule another one and just start it at three or something as far as I'm concerned. You know, I I think that's kind of should be part of the bargain here. We're putting these people rightfully so, but we're putting them through these this extended process. But we we can't just sort of stay, well, we'll do it next month or the right after.
Okay, what what?
Currently on the the June eighth work session, we have it scheduled to start at three thirty. Um, because Dave Kilgore and Marty Bowwaters Baldwin are coming back for workforce. And Stephanie Kurt and Aaron will be here to talk about the space study.
The June eighth they're coming back?
Yes, sir.
So we've got two things already on that.
Yes, sir. And we've given each about forty five minutes.
They were going to be bringing back additional details from the questions that the board asked them about, I think.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything from them in terms of what their plans to do. And since I'm chairman of the council, I'd really like to put them off and look at that first.
I mean, we can.
Let's put them off another two weeks or another.
Okay.
Okay, let's let's go ahead and put Signature Station on.
So we'll leave it at three thirty?
Well, or you think three?
I think three o'clock would be better.
Okay.
Unless there's an objection from the board member.
And the sole topic will be Signature Station or do you want to hear space study after afterwards?
Both of them, yeah.
Yeah, both of them.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, both of them are fine.
Yeah, I think.
That's not a problem at all. Anybody have any conflict with that?
Well, I'm I'm hand handedly trying to bring up my calendar here.
And I'll email Mr. Mark and Tony and
Pretty easy.
Mr. Dudley this evening.
Like, how can we do that?
Yeah, I I, that should be fine.
Okay, let's go ahead and schedule for a, um
Okay.
Work session for that day for both them and and we want to do three thirty or three o'clock?
Three o'clock is what I wrote down.
My goodness.
Three.
Very good.
And for the benefit of those that will be preparing your agenda packet, is there anything that you specifically want us to bring forward related to the rezoning? Do you want to see everything that you would typically see in your standard agenda packet?
Yeah, I mean, my my point would be that, yeah, the planning department would basically bring it to us.
Okay.
And, you know, we want the, it's not, I don't think it's going to work if they, I mean, the applicants need to be there.
Yes. Okay, I think that that gives us enough input.
Yeah.
Very good. Nothing further on the calendar?
Um, no, sir. We'll, we'll go from there on scheduling the public hearing.
Next would be, um, the secondary six year plan, public hearing. Who wants to leave that? Is that Alan leaving that?
Um, Alan is here.
I didn't get to.
Freedom is.
Is already a cocktail when you go?
Yes, he did.
Um, the only thing that I noted in the cover memo is that you had your work session with BDOT. Um, Alan participated virtually. We didn't get to have him here in person, but um, he reviewed the draft secondary six year plan, which you have in your packet. And um, do you want him to go over the few segments that were changed to the six year plan to move the projects along faster this year to do that? But we did not add any new projects to the plan this year.
If if you could, Alan, that'd be appreciated, just to go over the things very quickly.
Okay, I sure will. I can do it with my copies.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So I'll I'll start on page one and I can reference back to the packets that you received earlier. But we're anticipating funding in FY twenty seven of two different types of funds, district grant fund that can be used for unpaid roads and telefee funds. Those are funds that we can use on any secondary system route for just about anything. The telefee funds are ninety five thousand dollars, the district grant and paid are two hundred and eight four thousand dollars. So what, and and I really have to thank our assistant president engineer Bethel Caffey, because she put so much work into this this year and scenarios. But what we did is we moved some of the funding around so that we could advance Matthew Mills sooner. Both of those projects will be funded on the north end and the south end at the same time, so that we can begin them later next year. They will be fully funded in twenty twenty, FY twenty twenty three, which begins July the first, twenty twenty two. So we'll be able to begin the second portion of both of those legs. And that's the way they've aligned those funds. We pushed Greenwood Road and Jones Mill Road out. Those two segments, both the north end Jones Mill Road, the south end six thirty five on the other side of the bridge that we're working on now are funded at the same time. That way we'll be able to work on those two projects at the same time and hard service them together in unison. It pushed out some of the funding for Pushy Mountain. And then as we get into the next cycle of the secondary six year plan, those two route segments will be fully funded. It added, it moved the funding up for Harbor Drive and add Harbor Drive. We we bumped the funding up for that. We reduced that route into two segments where the cul-de-sac to the north begins. And we'll be able to advance and begin work on that route segment this year. Then it pushed it. It separated that out into one segment for a hundred thousand dollars, then another for two hundred and twenty. It will be fully funded next July the first, that we can begin on that second leg to the west. The future funds are shown out in Greenwood Road, Jones Mill, and the two sections of Pushy Mountain. So that's where the FY twenty seven funds are. And the way that she's proposed, these route segments make a lot of sense to me in advancing work.
Very good. Thank you, Alan. Part of this is we've been in a very modified public hearing setting. And now with the public having more access to come in, I wanted to make sure that we just covered the things very quickly. So that anyone that might be interested have the opportunity. All right, very well. Open the public hearing. Allison, any comments received?
No, sir. Mr. Chairman, we did not receive any before the deadline and there's no one signed up to speak this evening.
All right, very good. Close the public hearing.
Well, based on that input from the public, I approve the meeting.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. And this is resolution. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Have this unanimously. Thank you very much, Alan. Appreciate it.
Go find more money.
Thank you.
I would wonderfully, sir. All right, excuse me. Next is our public comment period. Allison, have anybody signed up to speak?
No, sir. Mr. Chairman, we did not.
Did we receive any?
I have, um, not received any specific to this meeting. I did forward um, one to the board this morning from Ms. Mountjoy regarding solar farms in the county.
Very good. All right. In that case, um, I don't believe we have anything for closed meeting. I would entertain one more motion. Would you jerk? For a second.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed.